Good evening and welcome to the Planning Board Meeting for Monday, September 27, 2021. It is 6 o'clock and I'm going to call this meeting to order. Before we begin the meeting, there will be one general period of public comment tonight during the oral communications. Persons speaking during the general public comment period may provide the Planning Board oral communications on any matter concerning city business. If you'd like to call and participate in the public comment period, please call 818-238-3335. We will announce when the phone lines will be open. Tonight's invocation will be given by Mr. Attikanian and I will deliver us the flag salute. Will you please stand for the invocation?
Heavenly Father, as we begin this meeting, we ask that you guide us, our thoughts, and give us the wisdom to engage in sound deliberation. May our conduct create an environment of cooperation and kindness for all. Thank you for the opportunities you give us to serve you and this great city. And please help us accomplish our goals. In your name we pray, amen.
Thank you. Please join me in saluting our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we get the roll call, please?
Board member Monaco?
Present.
Vice Chair Rosati?
I am here.
Board member Attikunian?
Present.
I'll let the record show. Okay, Board member Monaco?
I'm here, having issues.
Okay, and let the record show Chair Gambola is absent.
There we go.
In order to balance the health risks associated with COVID-19 and the public's right to conduct the people's business in a transparent and open manner during the current state of emergency and in the interest of public health and safety, board members will be participating in an online planning board meeting. City facilities are closed to the public until further notice and the public will not be able to physically attend today's meeting. The city is providing alternatives to in-person attendance for viewing and participating in the planning board meeting. In lieu of in-person attendance, members of the public may participate in the public comic period by calling 818-238-3335. Do we have any announcements?
There are no announcements from staff.
There is one public hearing on tonight's agenda. Item number one, now is the time and place for the hearing of project number 20-0003289 concerning a request for a resolution approving a Sustainable Communities Environmental Assessment, SCEA, and Mitigation Monitoring and Reporting Program, MMRP, and a resolution approving conditional use permit density bonus waivers, development review, and tentative parcel map number 083410 for a mixed-use project submitted pursuant to SB 330, the Housing Accountability Act, to allow construction of a mixed-use project on a 10.43 acre site that includes 862 residential units, 151,800 square feet of office space, and 9,700 square feet of ground-level commercial and retail space at the address at 2311 North Hollywood Way in the C3 commercial business zone. Before we begin, do any planning board members have any legal or other conflict of interest regarding this hearing?
No.
Last week I was, I participated in a site tour with some of the project sponsors. Nothing I saw or discussed should prevent me from having an open mind pertaining to tonight's planning meetings and discussions.
Okay, so that would be in this next section, that that was a different category.
Oh, so sorry, sorry.
So have any planning board members had any communications, including written, oral, with the applicant or the applicant's representative or any other person?
No.
I did have a cup of coffee afterwards with Jack O'Neill. Nothing was discussed pertaining to the project. We had had some mutual acquaintances, we found out later, but nothing was discussed. It was just a general comment on the real estate business in general. So I don't know how you want to handle that.
I'll let our city attorney weigh in on that.
As I said, nothing was discussed. Yeah, I have dropped a call into him and sent him an email about it.
All right, but I saw, just for the public record, I'd like Mr. McDougal to make a comment.
Yeah, Board member Monaco, I saw your email today and that's not a concern that you met with Mr. O'Neill. But for the board members who attended a site visit, can you indicate who was present and just the nature of the of the tour?
So I was present at one of the site visits and there was communication with the developer and staff regarding the project, a lot of question and answers regarding the the project itself.
I was at the most, the latest meeting at the, and I did, I gathered information, really didn't provide too much.
Board member Heiner?
Yep, at my meeting, it was with, Mr. Ramirez was there, Justin Fleming from the LaTerra Group, Richard Solares was also present, as well as Jack O'Neill from the O'Neill Group.
Mr. Attikunian?
I wasn't able to make the tour. I had, in fact, I had scheduled it, but a last-minute obligation came up and I had to cancel and there wasn't enough time to reschedule a meeting. So I haven't had a meeting with anyone, actually. I've studied all the documents.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Vice Chair, I'm having trouble hearing Mr. Monaco. Am I the only one experiencing that or other people are having that trouble too?
We all are.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's somewhat difficult to hear you, Mr. Monaco. I don't know if the speaker needs to be closer to you. I'm not sure what the solution is.
Is that, is that a little better?
It's a little bit better.
A little bit.
Okay, okay. I just crank it up a little bit, it should work.
Thank you.
Mr. Ramirez, have the notices as required by law been given?
Yes, they have.
Are there any written communications on this matter?
Yes, there were written communications that were included in the agenda packet under Exhibit K. There were also, and that was as of last week, when the packets were delivered to the board and made available to the public. There were additional communications over the weekend as well as today, and those have been transmitted electronically to board members that are conducting the meeting remotely as well as hard copies that were provided here at the dais.
Thank you. Will the representative of the Community Development Department please introduce yourself and summarize the matter for us?
Good evening, Vice Chair Rosati, members of the board. My name is Marcel Medina, Associate Planner and Project Planner. The project before you is a proposed conditional use permit, development review, and tentative parcel map application. Also included in the request is the approval of a Sustainable Communities Environmental Assessment for the project site located at 2311 North Hollywood Way. The project site is located at 2311 North Hollywood Way. The proposed project consists of demolishing the existing building and creating two new seven-story residential buildings at a total square footage of 644,151 square feet. There will be two subterranean parking structures located under each building, providing additional parking for the residential units. The project proposes to provide 8,200 square feet of commercial and retail space at ground level below the residential units along Hollywood Way, near the corner of Hollywood Way and Valhalla Drive. The applicant has also proposed two separate options for providing office space. Option one consists of providing a three-story standalone office building at 84,900 square feet. Option two consists of providing a five-story standalone building at, I'm sorry, at over 150,000 square feet. Both office options and the commercial and retail portions will be parked per the Burbank Municipal Code requirements. The residential component of the project will provide 1,125 parking spaces. The project site is located at 2311 North Hollywood Way and is bordered by Valhalla Drive to the south, Hollywood Way to the east, and Van Owen Street to the north. The project site is adjacent to the Hollywood Burbank Airport and the Valhalla Memorial Park Cemetery. The project site is currently vacant and was most recently occupied by Fry's Electronics. The existing building will be demolished as part of the proposed project. The project site is zoned C3 commercial general business, which allows for an assortment of retail and commercial uses. The project site has a general plan land use designation of regional commercial. The general plan envisions areas with this land use designation as a location that provides a variety of employment opportunities and services that address regional needs for retail, service, dining, and entertainment. Areas with this designation are envisioned to support the media industry and support large-scale projects that would otherwise be challenging to build at other locations in the city. The applicant is making four requests as part of this project, which includes a conditional use permit, development review, tentative parcel map, and the adoption of a sustainable Communities Environmental Assessment. The conditional use permit is required in the C3 zone when residential units are built above a commercial use. The development review is required anytime projects are considered to have a regional or statewide significance. A tentative parcel map is being requested to split the site into three separate parcels. Also included in the request is the approval of the Sustainable Communities Environmental Assessment, also known as ESCHA, which is the environmental document that was used to analyze this project. This is applicable to projects that meet specific criteria, such as meeting the definition of a transit priority project and projects that contain at least 50% residential units. The review consists of an initial study and focuses on certain aspects of the project and the potential effects that the project could have to the surrounding areas. Items evaluated under the ESCHA review include, but are not limited to, a transportation study, geological investigation, and construction health risk assessment. When a potential impact is found, certain mitigations must be put in place to eliminate the potential impact. When the analysis of ESCHA concludes that there are impacts that need to be mitigated, the mitigation monitoring, monitoring reporting plan is used to identify these solutions. As part of this project, mitigation measures, such as providing noise-muffling windows and doors, conducting a soil management plan, and added measures to reduce construction noise have all been implemented and are required as part of the project. These measures mitigate any potential impacts that may arise from the project. The applicant has proposed certain elements to the project that will enhance environmental benefits. The project is being built to a leadership in energy and environmental design, also known as LEED, and will provide solar panels where appropriate and will provide approximately 230 new trees around the project site. Through a state density bonus request, the applicant is able to increase the overall base density by 42.5%. In exchange for a density bonus, the applicant is required to provide 13.2% of very low-income units as part of the project. The density bonus request also allows the applicant to apply for waivers from certain development standards that would otherwise cause constraints that limit the ability for the applicant to build the number of units allowed under the density bonus law. The waivers that the applicant has asked for are height standards, setbacks, and residential Parking will be provided in three parking garages. The retail and office components will be parked according to the BMC. The residential component of the project will be parked in compliance with the local and state density law. The applicant will provide $250,000 towards the implementation of a neighborhood traffic management plan, which will analyze further solutions for potential cut-through traffic in the surrounding residential neighborhood. The project complies with local and state inclusionary and density bonus law. The project is providing 800, I'm sorry, 80 very low, very low-income, deed-restricted units as part of the project. The project will meet the housing goals that are set through the general plan and the city's affordable housing strategy by providing a project that will facilitate the following: provide housing as part of a mixed-use development that includes affordable units and live-work units to accommodate people and families with diverse housing needs and resources; redevelopment of an underutilized commercial site to augment the supply of housing in the community and create additional opportunities for creating a neighborhood with varying densities and housing types; utilization of inclusionary housing and density bonus as tools to help offset the cost of developing affordable housing; provide housing options for people to live near, work, and public transit by allowing higher residential densities near a transit and employment center; integration of sustainable and green building design and development of new housing units; help to ensure consistency with the city council housing goal of facilitating the development of 12,000 units by 2035 and state mandated housing production numbers. This table shows Burbank's existing regional housing needs assessment or RENA allocation, which is for the current housing cycle that started in 2014 and ends this year. The total number of housing units required to be built was 2,684. To date, a total of 697 units have been permitted. This table shows the city's required RENA allocation for the new housing city, the new housing cycle that starts in October 2021 and ends in 2029. A total of 8,772 units will be required. This project will contribute units to help the city meet the required RENA allocation As part of the project, the applicant has applied for a tentative parcel map. Through the parcel map request, the project site will be split into three separate lots. This slide shows the overall site plan of the project. The location of the residential units can be noted in yellow and orange. The commercial spaces are noted in red and the parking garages are located in gray. The two pedestrian passelles run through the middle of the project and allow vehicle-free pedestrian bike access within the project site. The office component will be located at the bottom left of the property. This elevation view gives perspective of the project from one of the pedestrian passelles looking into one of the many courtyards provided by the project design. This perspective is from Van Owen Street looking westbound. This particular view shows the live-work tenant spaces. This perspective is from Valhalla Drive. The project has been designed in a way that the residential units wrap around the garage and the parking garage has finishes to allow it to blend in with the residential units. This perspective shows the retail component along the corner of Valhalla Drive and Hollywood Way. The commercial component of the project will help activate this area. This perspective shows the office building from Valhalla Drive, which includes open spaces for future office tenants. This elevation shows the eastern elevation of the office building and shows one of the pedestrian passelles and the bike lane. The project will provide public benefits such as providing 80 very low-income units, new bicycle parking facilities, new 15-foot-wide tree-lined public sidewalks, and new EV charging Therefore, staff recommends the adoption of a resolution of the Planning Board of the City of Burbank approving a Sustainable Communities Environmental Assessment and Mitigation Monitoring and Reporting Program pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act for the Burbank Aero Crossings mixed-use project at 2311 North Hollywood Way, numbers 20-0003289, based on the findings of fact and subject to the recommended conditions of approval, and the adoption of a resolution of the Planning Board of the City of Burbank approving a request for a conditional use permit, density bonus waivers, development review, and tentative parcel map number 083410 for a mixed-use project submitted pursuant to SB 330 at 2311 North Hollywood Way, project number 20-0003289. This concludes my presentation as staff is available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Vice Chair, if I can just add, what we'll do is, once there's the presentation and public input on the project, then when we get an opportunity to respond, then we'll respond to all the comments so that we get it just in that one section for feedback to the board.
Got it. I will now invite the applicant or the representative to address the planning board. You will have a maximum time of 15 minutes to make your presentation.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Chris Turtalot with LaTerra Development. Thank you so much for joining us this evening. Consistent with today's virtual world, we've prepared a video for tonight's presentation. So with that, we're going to play our video. Thank you.
I'm Lauren Boyd, Chief Legal and Compliance Officer of LaTerra Development.
Hello, I'm Fatou Balde, Controller and interim CFO of LaTerra.
We'd like to thank the planning board for providing us the opportunity to present this dynamic development project, Aero Crossings. LaTerra has invested significant resources to develop Aero Crossings. We're truly passionate about this project and proud to share it with you and the Burbank community.
Aero Crossings represents the best of LaTerra's talents, experience, and mission. We believe and hope you will agree that not only is Aero Crossings a uniquely stunning development, but contributes many enhancements to the City of Burbank. As you will see, this project combines housing with countless amenities, work-life spaces, office and retail while improving the surrounding community.
That's right for two. And in addition to the project investment and so many community benefits, Aero Crossings will provide 80 much-needed affordable housing units for Burbank, the largest number of affordable housing units in a single project in Burbank in two decades. Now I'd like to introduce LaTerra's founder and CEO, Charles Turtalot.
Hello, I'm Charlie Turtalot, founder and CEO of LaTerra Development, and I'm honored to be speaking to you today at this Burbank planning meeting. You may know LaTerra has been here before and not that long ago, and with the support of city staff, planning board, and city council, is now under construction on a $400 million mixed-use development project adding 573 housing units on Front Street in downtown Burbank. Our company is committed to our mission statement to create dynamic developments that provide positive impacts to our local neighborhoods and cities. We know that their success is our success. We also know that if we are to be proud users of the resources from this planet, we must favor project and building designs that use sustainable materials, are energy-efficient, and use the latest in available technology. We believe growing better is more important than growing bigger. This time, LaTerra is here to present and ask you to support the Aero Crossings project. Our company and consultant team have been working on this project with the city and have received guidance and constructive feedback from city staff. We have learned a lot each time we go through this process. Aero Crossings will create a new neighborhood where people can live, work, shop, and access public transit services like the airport, metro link trains and buses, as well as bicycle and pedestrian pathways, a true crossroads of convenience options. And here to tell you more about this one-of-a-kind development project is my son and Managing Director at LaTerra Development, Chris Turtalot.
Hi, I'm Chris Turtalot, Managing Director at LaTerra Development. We're excited to present Burbank Aero Crossings, which we designed with three guiding principles. One, sustainability, the project will be LEED gold. Two, connectivity, we're adjacent to the metro link station and nearby employment. And three, we're not just building a project, we're creating a neighborhood. The project will contain 862 apartment homes, of which 80 units will be very low-income, with the low-income units including studios, one-bedrooms, two-bedrooms, and three-bedrooms to accommodate singles, couples, and families. The project will include live-work units. Additionally, the project will include 150,000 square feet of office and 9,700 square feet of street-level retail. The project will include abundant parking and over 131,000 square feet of open space. Aero Crossings will be LEED gold certified. It will contain significant sustainable design features, including Energy Star appliances, electric vehicle charging stations, drought-tolerant landscaping, high-performance windows, low-flow water fixtures, enhanced air filtration, and more.
Good evening. My name is Richard Solares, President of Urban Architecture Lab. We are the project architects for the Burbank Aero Crossings project. The site is uniquely located across the street from the Hollywood Burbank Airport. As you can see in this slide, the project site is located at the former Fry's Electronics Store. Fry's recently closed all their stores nationwide. The project site is currently vacant. Up next, we would like to show you the following video that depicts our vision for the project. Up next, we would like to show you the following video that depicts our vision for the project. Now I would like to walk you through a few images to get you more familiar with the project. In this image, you can see our retail plaza, which features a retail space and conveniently located Uber pickup and drop-off spaces in front. Next to that is our live-work units, both two- and three-story, fronting along Van Owen. As you can see here, the massing of the building is kept lowest at the street level, then gradually steps up as you go away from the street and the pedestrian experience. In this slide is our state-of-the-art office building with adjacent parking structure. In the design of this building, we were really looking to create outdoor open space for each level of the building. As you can see here, the top level has a wraparound continuous terrace. The middle two levels have their own continuous terraces directly adjacent to them, and the lowest level of the building has a continuous colonnade running the length of the building. You can also see in this slide the Screenland Paseo, which features a pedestrian open space as well as a north-south bike lanes running continuous from Valhalla to Van Owen. In this slide, we're at the corner of Valhalla and Hollywood Way, the site of our community-serving retail. The community-serving retail will be anchored with a full-service restaurant, which will include outdoor dining, which is not currently available in the immediate area. And we feel like both the community at large, as well as our residents, will benefit from this great enhancement. I've highlighted just some of the key features of this project. But now I'd like to hand it over to Dale Goldsmith, who will be giving you an entitlement summary for the project.
Thank you, Richard. Good evening, honorable board members. My name is Dale Goldsmith. I'm a partner at the law firm of Armbruster Goldsmith &amp; Delvac, land use counsel to LaTerra. I would like to speak briefly on the project approvals before you tonight. As set forth in the staff report, LaTerra is seeking development review for construction of a structure in the C3 zone that is more than 1,000 square feet, a conditional use permit to allow residential uses over ground-floor commercial, a parcel map to subdivide the property, and density bonus review for an affordable housing density bonus, together with incentives for increased building height and reduced open space, and waivers for relief from certain development standards, including setbacks and lot coverage. The project's affordable component of 13.2% of the base density reserved for very-low-income individuals and families meets the city's inclusionary requirements, which allow applicants to reduce the total percentage of units below 15% by providing more very-low-income units at a ratio of 1.25 fewer low-income units for each additional very-low-income unit. This amount of affordable also qualifies the project for a density bonus under state density bonus law. Last year, the state adopted AB 2345, which allows for by-right density bonuses of up to 50%. By providing 80 very-low-income units, the project's entitled to a 42.5% density bonus. AB 2345 also prohibits the city from imposing parking at a ratio of more than 1/2 space per unit. However, the project's providing substantially more parking than this minimum. Providing the 80 very-low-income units also entitles the project to two density bonus incentives, an unlimited number of waivers of development standards. State density bonus law requires the Planning Board to make special affirmative findings based on substantial evidence in the record to deny the incentives or waivers. We do not believe that there is such evidence in the record to support making these special findings. The project was reviewed as well by the Airport Land Use Commission, or ALUC. In a report dated August 24, 2021, ALUC staff determined that the project is consistent with the policies contained in the Airport Land Use Plan and the ALUC review procedures with two minor conditions that have been incorporated into the staff report. I would now like to introduce Justin Fleming, who will summarize the project's team's outreach efforts. Thank you.
Thank you, Dale. Good evening. My name is Justin Fleming, and I am the Vice President of Development for LaTerra Development. I am here tonight to discuss our community outreach. At LaTerra, one of our key pillars of responsible development is community collaboration. We want to take this time to thank everyone who we have presented to. We value the feedback received over the last six months. A few of the organizations that we have presented to are the Boys and Girls Club, the Burbank Chamber of Commerce, YMCA, the Burbank Coalition of Nonprofits, the Hollywood Burbank Airport, and the Burbank Advisory Council on Disabilities. We have also met with local residents and business owners within the immediate vicinity of the project site. We will continue to collaborate with the community even after approval through our hotline or through email. The phone number is 818-435-7577, and our email address is info@aeroCrossing.com. Thank you for your time and consideration. I will now hand off the presentation to Chris Tortolot to discuss the economic impact and community benefits for the project.
The project will provide significant economic benefits to the city of Burbank, including $50 million in public benefits comprised of over $40 million to construct 80 very-low-income affordable units, $10 million in off-site utility improvements, $3 million in public right-of-way improvements, including sidewalk activation through 15-foot-wide sidewalks along with bike lanes, 3,000 new jobs during construction, and another 813 jobs ongoing, $1.4 million in general fund revenues each year, including $600,000 in property taxes, transportation impact fees of $2.9 million, school fees to the Burbank Unified School District of $2.7 million. This project is about offering new housing types to Burbank residents across all income levels. The city of Burbank is in a housing crisis, and rents and home prices are rising rapidly while supply is scarce. The city set an ambitious goal of increasing its housing stock by 12,000 units over the next eight years. Aero Crossings will provide 7% of that goal in one project. Providing new housing opportunities will reduce vehicle commuters, allowing people to live in Burbank near where they work, which will reduce greenhouse gas emissions. This is a LEED Gold transit-oriented development adjacent to the metro link station, replacing a vacant building. The site is walkable to significant employment. The project provides 80 very-low-income units across all unit types and sizes, which is the most affordable units the city has seen in any one project in over 20 years. We respectfully request your support by approving this project tonight. Thank you.
I would assume that's the end of the applicant's presentation? Yep, okay.
Yes, sir.
We will now open up the public hearing to hear from any persons who wish to speak on this matter. Each person may address the Planning Board for a maximum time of three minutes. To address the Planning Board, please call 818-238-3335. The phone lines are now open. Please bear with us as we take a couple of minutes for the first callers to get through the line. Madam Clerk, do we have any callers?
At this moment, we do not.
Okay, we'll give it a couple of minutes.
Our next caller is Jared Lanford. Jared Lanford, you are now live with the Planning Board.
Good evening. Hello, Planning Board. My name is Jared Lanford. I'm a representative with the Southwest Regional Council of Carpenters. As a preliminary, I just wanted to mention that the city failed to give proper notice to the Carpenters Council for today's hearing. The Brown Act requires that notice of hearing be mailed to those who request it at least 10 days before. That does not appear to have happened here. The city's responses to comments received on the environmental assessment dismissed our argument that the city could require the project to be built utilizing a local skilled and trained workforce. Local hire and skilled and trained workforce requirements reduce construction-related environmental impact while benefiting the local economy. In a recent 2020 report titled "Putting California on the High Road: A Jobs and Climate Action Plan for 2030", the California Workforce Development Board concluded that investments in growing, diversifying, and upskilling California's workforce can positively affect returns on climate mitigation costs. Moreover, just this year, the South Coast Air Quality Management District found that the use of a local certified apprenticeship program or a skilled and trained workforce with a local hire component can result in air pollution reduction. Recently, the city of Haverd in Northern California adopted skilled and trained workforce requirements into its general plans and municipal codes. Local skilled and trained workforce requirements can boost economic development and mitigate transportation and greenhouse gas impact by minimizing vehicle miles travel. The city should add local skilled and trained workforce requirements for this project to benefit the city's economic development as well as the environment. The city's responses to comments say that these community benefits are not applicable since they do not address the project's environmental impact. However, they would clearly work to mitigate air quality, greenhouse gas emissions, vehicle miles traveled, and transportation impact. The city could also consider the carpenter's recommendations regarding establishment of additional protocols for the project if it is constructed while the COVID-19 public health crisis continues. COVID-19 is just not an effect on the environment on the project. The project would both cause and exacerbate COVID-19 exposure and transmission. This is an exacerbating effect that the project adds on existing environmental hazard, and the board should reconsider our comments. The project does not meet the requirements for environmental review through the use of a Sustainable Communities Environmental Assessment. It fails to incorporate many of the mitigation measures identified in the Southern California Association of Government Regional Transportation Plans and Sustainable Community Strategies released in 2016 and 2020. The city's response to our comments on the SKEA say that incorporation of all feasible mitigation measures identified in the RTE SBS.
Thank you, Mr. Lanford. Your three minutes has been reached.
Thank you. Next caller?
Our next caller is Michael McCarron. Michael McCarron, you are now live with the Planning Board.
Good evening. Good evening. Hi, my name is Michael McCarron. I'm a local carpenters' union representative. We would like to see a community wealth plan as part of this project for all trades. All too often on residential projects like this, including LaTerra projects in Venice and Santa Monica, the construction workforce was paid unlivable wages with no benefits. Most of these workers will have to go on government subsidies, which is costing California taxpayers $3 billion a year. The city of Burbank should require a community wealth policy on this project, which requires family-supporting wages, skills, training, and job access to the community members rather than simply accepting projects founded on low cost and low wages. Given LaTerra's past practices, the city needs to insulate the community from this type of worker exploitation which LaTerra is directly responsible for. The construction workforce should require full family health plans, skilled and trained workforce standards through certified apprenticeship programs, paid sick leave, pension, and vacation holiday pay, as well as local hire. High-quality responsible bidder standards should be established to ensure high-quality construction performance. Construction contractors at every level comply with labor law and have no history of fraudulent or grossly negligent business practices. General contractors should be required to self-perform a minimum of 5% of all construction crap work for which they are responsible for. We believe all Burbank locals deserve an innovative economic solution that puts them on the path to build better careers, increase access to family healthcare, and enrich the community at large. The carpenters' union does not support this project or any of LaTerra's projects until they commit to a community wealth plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller?
Our next caller is Ernesto Pantoja. Ernesto Pantoja, you are now live with the Planning Board.
Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Chair and Commissioners. My name is Ernesto Pantoja. I'm calling on behalf of Sergio Rascón, Business Manager for Laborers Local 300. I would like to echo what my counterparts from the carpenters are saying. We do believe that more of these projects should require local hire requirements, skilled and trained workforce to protect the local workers in the community and get more people involved in the trades. But we are supportive of LaTerra Development. They're a developer that has been responsible to community needs and to our needs as well, especially by hiring contractors like Largo Concrete, who is one of our signatory contractors. We respect developers like this that are willing to reach out and work with a lot of the trades. We'd like them to work with more, obviously. But for us, it's important because a lot of people don't realize who represent the laborers, who we are. A lot of our members are veterans, returning veterans, who are transitioning to civilian life and whose skills don't necessarily translate into something in the real world. Many of our members are formerly incarcerated individuals who have felonies. And truthfully, a lot of them can't find work once they get out, and they find a life. They find a second chance at life sometimes, and sometimes their last chance at life by entering the trades, especially trades like the laborers' union, where they enter into the apprenticeship program and they're able to build a career, a new life, a new start. And you know, it's contractors like Largo partnering with developers like LaTerra that give these people an opportunity to build a new life and to start over and to define their lives and create something versus destroy something, which is what many of them were used to. And the idea that they're also building this many affordable units would be fantastic for our members, especially a lot of these apprentices, right? That are going to need places to live because costs of housing have gone up dramatically throughout LA County and that region. You know, for those reasons, you know, we stand with our brothers from the carpenters, and we would like to see the city look into these policies and implementing them. And we would ask that LaTerra would look at that as well. But we do stand in support, and we ask for your support on this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller?
Our next caller is Elon Ruskin. Elon Ruskin, you are now live with the planning board.
Thank you very much. Good evening, esteemed members of the board. Thank you for taking my call. I want to commend the planning board for considering this development in a speedy manner. The city's housing shortage is dire. The way out of a shortage is to increase supply, and we must do this urgently. There is no legitimate economic or moral basis to resist replacing a dead big-box store with more homes. Claims that building more housing will make housing more expensive are not in good faith. Multiple scientific studies by researchers like Evan Mast and others show, from data, from measurements, that building even market-rate housing increases affordability of neighboring homes in exactly the way that basic economics and common sense would say. And this development has lots of affordable homes set aside. If we kill this building because it is not affordable enough, that does not invite another developer to build denser, cheaper apartments in its place instead. It just means that fewer homes get built, and the objectors know that. The belief that building more homes makes rents go up is unscientific at best and disingenuous at worst. Housing is expensive here because we make it so expensive to build. This is exactly the kind of development any city needs. Lots of dwellings near shops and jobs so we can take more trips by foot and fewer by car, and the most important thing any of us can do for the environment. Callers have resisted housing in other parts of the city by saying, "Do not build apartments in my neighborhood. Do it at the former IKEA, the former Fries instead. That's the right place for an apartment complex." Well, here we are. Walk the talk. I ask you, resist those who try to sabotage new homes by finding delay after delay in the process. Approve everything, as high as they want to go, as many apartments as they can sit, and as fast as you can. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next caller.
Our next caller is Sean Mann. Sean Mann, you are now live with the planning board.
Hi, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Perfect. Thank you very much for you guys' time. And my name is Sean Mann. I'm also a representative for the carpenters' union, as you've heard a few of my constituents speak this evening. And I would like, as a carpenter representative, as a local carpenter for the area, we would like to see labor standards implemented in relation to this plan, you know, with skilled and trained workforce language, which allows, you know, the workers, excuse me, the workers that work, oh, I'm sorry, that would have the opportunity to work on this project would have been able to go through or have been attending a four-year accredited program. Also, you know, allowing the members of the community to also work, work, live, and play, you know, and give back to the community of Burbank, you know, through economic prosperity, being able to spend local tax, you know, their tax-paying dollars, you know, hard-earned money, back into the community of which they, you know, live in. And also be, you know, again, the local hire, which would create economic prosperity and help, you know, this project, you know, just prosper, and not only that, you know, the project be built on time and under budget and, you know, built with the skilled and trained professionals, you know, just, I'm sorry, also just, you know, be able to give back to the local communities. And that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next caller.
I go after John.
Good evening.
Our next caller is Chuck Powell. Chuck Powell, you are now live with the planning board.
How you doing today?
Good evening.
My name is Chuck Powell. I'm a union carpenter. And I'm also would like to see the Burbank City Planning implement the community wealth. For one is I have two sons that are also in the trade. And driving, having to drive hundreds of miles to find work, or San Bernardino, or San Diego, or going up to Oro Grande to work, I feel that local hire is very important for the community. We live in the Burbank area where my sons will have their families and be able to spend their money at the local shops and keep the money in the local community and not having to drive an hour back and forth to work and miss baseball games or soccer games or volleyball games or any of the activities of having the family dream, of having kids in a family and living in Southern California. The biggest hurdle is having those jobs within that distance so they're not having to drive an hour and a half each way to work and missing out on opportunities to be with their family, to have to drive to find. I feel that Burbank City Council would definitely recommend the local hire would be greatly appreciated to the carpenters' union and to all the local carpenters. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We've got about 11 callers.
Our next caller is Evelyn Perez. Evelyn Perez, you are now live with the planning board.
Okay, thank you very much. Good evening, planning board.
Good evening.
School people. First, I want, I did not know there was a visit on.
Our caller is Evelyn Perez. Evelyn Perez, you are now live with the planning board.
Can I have you turn down your radio or your TV? Ma'am. Ma'am. Hello? Hello? Let's go to another caller. If I can remind everyone at home, if you're going to call in, turn down your computers or your TV or whatever you're watching so we can, we don't hear the feedback from, because there's a slight delay. Thank you.
Our next caller is Jason Green. Jason Green, you are now live with the planning board.
Good evening, board members. Can you hear?
Good evening. Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you very much. Again, good evening, board members. My name is Jason Green. I'm a union carpenter. I would like to see a community wealth plan implemented for this project and any other projects in the city of Burbank, along with a skilled and trained workforce that has graduates from a state-accredited apprenticeship program. Carpenters or any construction workers deserve to have a well-paying job with benefits at a time like this. It's not only about the project in Burbank. It's also about the workers that should also be able to live where they work, spend the money where they work. The carpenters would like to see a local hire, you know, implemented for this project along with a skilled and trained workforce that have also been graduated from a state-accredited apprenticeship program. The carpenters' union does not support this project until there is a community wealth policy and labor standards that are met. Thank you very much. Have a great night.
Thank you. Next caller.
Our next caller is Nick Reyes. Nick Reyes, you are now live with the planning board.
Good evening. Okay. And good evening to all of you. Again, my name is Nicholas Reyes, and I'm a local carpenter. With a little bit over 20 years of experience, you know, working big jobs, small jobs, anywhere from casinos, schools, hospitals, and shopping centers. I was very lucky because I worked for a responsible contractor, you know, one that paid the area standards, a living wage, provided benefits for me and my family. That is not what this project is bringing to the city of Burbank. Because this developer, La Tierra, has a very bad track record from past completed projects. They hire very irresponsible contractors such as Rockwell that cheated their workers by not paying area standards, no overtime, and even in some cases, cash pay to avoid paying proper taxes. That is why we, the carpenters' union, oppose this project until the developer commits hiring a responsible contractor that would respect the area standards and pay the workers correctly, provide benefits for the workers and their families. You know, developers, father and son, they talk about bringing a positive impact to the community of Burbank. If hiring a cheating contractor bringing any benefits to the community, I don't think so. So, again, I'm going to ask, you know, this board to deny the approval of this project until there is a community wealth policy and a labor standard, you know, attached to this project. You know, again, the developer talks about 3,000 jobs. But what kind of jobs are they talking about? You know, a job where the worker cannot afford even the low, 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 low income, you know, affordable housing that they're going to build? Not even that. You know, when we have to subsidize, we in the middle class with our taxes, you know, the medical benefits for these workers. And that just, I do not see what the benefit, what the community benefit would that be? You know, community wealth means jobs, wages, and benefits. And that's, that's all I have. Thank you for taking my call.
Thank you. Next caller, please.
Our next caller is Martín de la Cruz. Martín de la Cruz, you are now live with the planning board.
Good afternoon, honorable board members. Thank you very much for taking my call and listening to our, our voice here. One of the main things that I like to say is, you know, we're not opposed to what our brothers and sisters of the carpenters' union, what they're saying about the local hire requirements that need to be in place. We're 100% for that. But unfortunately, we do support this project because Largo Concrete is one of our signatory contractors that have been working well with us and working well with our membership and giving them plenty of jobs with a very livable wage on that. With that said, I'm a 17-year member of the laborers' local union. I represent many members right now. I started, the laborers was one of the unions that actually gave me a chance to make a very livable wage. Coming out of the Marine Corps, I did not have transferable skills. I was a machine gunner out in the Marine Corps. And unfortunately, the only job I could get is either security or in the police force. And I really didn't feel like getting shot at anymore. So I went into the laborers. They gave me plenty of work, plenty of opportunities to advance. And that's what we're fighting for here. This is what we're supporting, is that aspect of the project. Largo's been, like we said, a very great signatory contractor with us. They've employed many of our laborers and many of that actually do live in the city of Burbank and the surrounding areas, as I do myself. Me and my family, we frequent the city life right there in Burbank, and we love it. It's awesome. So 100%, we support this project, and we hope you guys approve it tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please.
Our next caller is Christian Carrasco. Christian Carrasco, you are now live with the planning board.
Good evening. Good evening. Hello, my name is Christian Carrasco, and I'm a local union carpenter. I would like to see all new construction projects in Burbank to include community wealth with labor standards and local hire. Burbank residents deserve to share in the economic property that these projects can bring. Instead, all economic benefits are going to the developer. Burbank residents deserve projects that promote racial equity, hiring, and ecological sustainability for construction and current and future residents. The union carpenters have provided wages equitable, hiring, and environmental consideration in the construction for years. The carpenters' union does not support any project until community wealth policy and labor standards are met. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Next caller, please.
Our next caller is Brian Flynn. Brian Flynn, you are now live with the planning board.
Good evening. My name is Brian Flynn. I'm an attorney with the law firm Lozado Jury here tonight on behalf of the nonprofit group Supporters Alliance for Environmental Responsibility, or SAFER. SAFER is requesting that the board not approve this project at this time for three overarching reasons, each of which is discussed in greater detail in the written correspondence submitted to the board and staff last week. First, the SCA does not comply with CECL. The SCA is a streamlined version of CECL review for certain transit priority projects where, among other things, all feasible mitigation measures from prior environmental impact reports are applied to the project. And this has not happened here, as was mentioned by the first commenter from the carpenters earlier as well. Our written comment highlighted one example for air quality impacts. You know, the 2016 and 2020 EIRs both listed Tier IV engines as mitigation for air quality impacts, and that's the cleanest heavy-duty engines commercially available. However, the SCA does not require Tier IV engines for the project, and this is true of other multiple other mitigation measures from the EIRs. And until all feasible mitigation measures from those EIRs are applied to the project, it's improper to proceed with the SCA under CECL's streamlining provisions. A second, review of the SCA by indoor and outdoor air quality experts found the project would have significant impacts that were not discussed and disclosed. And these experts found that indoor emissions of formaldehyde, as well as outdoor emissions of diesel particulate matter, would result in increased cancer risks well in excess of the threshold set by the air district. And these impacts need to be disclosed and mitigated prior to approval of the project. And lastly, there's one issue with the requested waiver for the first-floor live-work units, and that's just not proper under the state density bonus law. Under the density bonus law, waivers can be requested for standards that would physically preclude development of the project, but nothing about the first-floor use restriction physically precludes construction. Rather, it only restricts the allowable use of the first floor. So because the applicant can physically build the project regardless of that allowable use, the density bonus law does not allow the applicant to seek or the city to grant that waiver for the first-floor live-work units. So in summary, SAFER is not opposed to the project per se, but only wants to ensure the project receives adequate environmental review. And as such, SAFER is requesting the board not approve the project and SCA at this time, and that the SCA be revised to address these concerns prior to project approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please.
Our next caller is Joshua Christensen. Joshua Christensen, you are now live with the planning board.
Good evening, planning board, Burbank. Appreciate your time.
Good evening.
So I want to share with you a study that happened in UC Berkeley. So, I wanna, I wanna, uh, share with you a study that happened in UC Berkeley, uh, labor research education. It happened in June 2021, so it's pretty recent. And I wanna share a quote with you. First off, um, I am not for this project at this time, uh, until there is a community wealth plan in place. Uh, my name is Josh Christensen again, with the, uh, the Southwest Regional Council of Carpenters. I wanna share with you a couple quotes from this, uh, from the study. It says, "We find almost half of families of construction workers in California are enrolled in a safety net program," which is like Medicare, Medicaid, some kind of, uh, tax aid, or, uh, some kind of, uh, public aid that, uh, that they are, uh, involved in or enrolled in. The safety net program had an annual cost of $3 billion. So $3 billion a year of our tax dollars are going to some kind of aid for construction workers in California. By comparison, over a third of all California workers have a family member enrolled in one of more safety net programs. So construction at large is a vital industry in the, in the state of California, and according to accounting for $107 billion in personal income in 2020. That's $1 out of every $25 total statewide in earnings. Um, also, in the study, it talks a little bit about, um, the residential, where most of these workers, 99% of the workers that are on this safety net program is in the residential construction area. That's exactly where all those workers are being cheated on their wages by not, uh, getting fair wages, not being given health care, not being given, given, uh, you know, paying up, paying payroll taxes, they're, they're being paid in cash. And it's usually in projects just like this one, where it's podium deck, residential, wood-framed, uh, drywall, and it's in the drywall industry and wood-framing and steel-stud industry in these residential, uh, projects is where we see the, this fraud happening. Um, we talk about, they talk about community wealth in the program, uh, uh, as their, as their company saying they're gonna create community wealth or commit community benefits. I think, uh, unless they have responsible contractors who, uh, participate in programs such as the partnership and pay health care and provide all these different benefits to their workers, they're actually putting a burden on all of us that are taxpayers. That taxpayer money should be going to helping the schools here in Burbank, which is a, a serious need that we have here in Burbank. Uh, our schools are, are, are underfunded, um, our board, the, the board doesn't even take a-
Thank you, sir. Your three minutes has been reached.
Thank you. Next caller, please.
Our next caller is Tamila Takahashi. Tamila Takahashi, you are now live with the planning board.
Good evening.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good, thank you. Good evening, planning board members, staff, and applicants. My name is Tamila Takahashi. Thank you for the thorough presentation for this project and the intention to give added value to our community. I live in Magnolia Park, and I use that section of Hollywood Way regularly, and my daughter uses that MetroLink station to ride the train to and from school in San Luis Obispo. I'm calling tonight with some questions. First, regarding Valhalla and the portion of Hollywood Way that surrounds this parcel, these streets are not designed for high-volume traffic. Will the project update these street designs to be able to handle the increase in traffic, particularly around improving the waiting areas to the light at that intersection to be more safe, and also on the Hollywood Way portion where there is a merge stop sign? That section is already somewhat unsafe to merge from, but it will be much more of a challenge with increased traffic. And on the west side of the project, there is no street at this time. Will there be a street or vehicle pass-through created on that side to allow for safe access around the project and to reduce the chance of needing to make detours? Secondly, regarding the park-and-ride and the Uber drop-off, which I think are smart designs for this project, will those be available for the general public to use? That MetroLink station has very little parking, and what parking is there is difficult to navigate and somewhat unsafe. It would be an impactful benefit to be able to have a dedicated public parking area and a way for us to easily access the MetroLink. Next, there seem to be a number of high-value amenities in this project, similar to the many amenities in the La Terra project over near where we live. The amenities are appealing and modern, but they also make the market value of the unit significantly higher. Will there be an option for renters to not pay for parking or other amenity access so that the units will be less expensive? And that leads me to my last question. It's great to hear that there will be low-income units. Will there also be medium-cost units, and for both the low-income and potential medium-cost units, who will manage them and keep accountability for the deed restrictions? I'm in general with support for this project, as we need more housing and this is the right location for it. I'm also in support for making sure that we speak of safety, integration into the community, and providing a wide range of financially accessible housing options for our residents. Thank you for your consideration. Have a great rest of your evening.
Thank you. Next caller.
Our next caller is Eric Kristin. Eric Kristin, you are now live with the planning board.
Good evening, planning board members. My name is Eric Kristin. I'm the executive director of the Coalition for Fair Employment in Construction. We are a statewide organization that fights for fair and open competition in the construction industry. I just wanted to tie a couple of things together tonight for you, in case you weren't aware of it. Uh, you may have noticed you've had a few carpenter union members, business agents, not workers, business agents calling in to oppose this project, apparently having, uh, more housing built in California that's $4 million, 4 million units behind what it should have right now, is something they're willing to do. Uh, but what they're not willing to tell you is that Exhibit K67, a letter that was sent to you by Lozado Drury, the law firm that's representing them, hiding behind a name, Supporters Alliance for Environmental Responsibility, or SAFER, um, the irony's not lost on any of us, is really just a front group, a legal front group for the carpenters' union that goes around the state and does this type of nonsense on housing projects and other developments, trying to hold them up using the CECL process. We call it green mail instead of blackmail, hoping to get a developer to, um, basically their project held up until the developer agrees to build it, uh, union-only. This delays projects, raises costs substantially, and openly discriminates against the 85% of the construction workforce that chooses to wake up on a daily basis and work union-free. Those are the workers, uh, along with, obviously, union workers as well that are building these projects, but the carpenters' union want it to be built only with their members. They believe in openly discriminating against other workers who happen to be carpenters, just not union carpenters, and using the CECL process to achieve their ends. We actually track all this on a website called phonyuniontreehuggers.com, where they use the CECL process to hold up projects until the owners quote-unquote "agree" to a union-only project, or a project-labor agreement, or a skilled and trained workforce, or whatever discriminatory euphemism they wanna hide behind, pushing their bigotry around the state. That's all they're doing. Raising costs, making housing unaffordable in the state of California, which is why we have an over $800,000 median home price in California. It's the highest in the country. It's, it's unsustainable. It's why we lost population last year in part. People can't afford to live here, they hold up projects, the unions do, until they get their union-only agreements, and they don't care if the projects are never seen through to fruition. That's what you're facing. That's who these callers are working, they won't admit it, that's who they're working with. But I'm tying in for you this, uh, exhibit that was sent to you, K67, and how this law firm is working hand and foot with the union carpenters that are calling in. That's how this works.
Thank you, Mr. Kristin. Your three minutes has been reached.
Thank you. Next caller.
Our next caller is Virginia Barnett. Virginia Barnett, you are now live with the planning board.
Thank you, planning board, for taking my call. Um, I came in in the middle of this, so please, I apologize for not having all the information I'd like to have. I'm not quite sure where 2311 North Hollywood Way is. I need that clarification. Number two, I drive Hollywood Way, I live at Clark and, and Hollywood Way. I drive Hollywood Way all the way out to Glen Oaks three to five times a week, and the traffic has gotten to be horrific. What type of traffic mitigations have been set up so this doesn't get, uh, more horrific than it already is? Um, they tried to put a Starbucks in at, um, Chandler, and, and we called, uh, everybody was against it because the traffic is already so bad. Um, number three, uh, I got involved in the planning of that group of units that were next to the 5 freeway. Um, it was a hotel and apartments and whatever. The developer got to decide what the affordable units were, and it turned out to be out of, I think, 40 or 50 units, it was like eight to 10 units, and they were all $1,500, and they were all not even one-bedroom units. And I don't, number one, that's not affordable for somebody that's just getting into the market and working at the large businesses we have in our, in our community. Uh, but number two, those 40, that $40 million should be, as I think he said, across all the units. However, I'd like more information about how those units will be broken down. We need units and housing in Burbank to support families. We don't need a whole lot of units that are just for one or two people. They get their jobs, and then they're gonna move someplace else. That's not quite what it, it's really, uh, about for me. Um, I'm not far against this plan yet, but I really don't think there should be an approval tonight until some of these questions have been answered. Thank you very much.
Next caller.
Our next caller is Deborah Bindy. Deborah Bindy, you are now live with the planning board.
Um, hi. I'm calling in because I'm, uh, wondering why our developer impact fees haven't been increased. They run about 2,000 where Glendale is 18, Pasadena is 19,000. And from their chart that they put up, they're way up the screen, 'cause it would be well over $15 million in impact fees. So, I, I'm not sure how I feel about this. I know we need housing, and also, what is considered affordable housing? Are you basing affordable at $160,000 a year? 'Cause if so, that's not what most of our families are making. Um, also, we've got a, a water rate increase and reduction of water use, and I know that we need to build, but I'm wondering about the impact on our sewer system, our water supply, the electric system. And I'm just very concerned at the way these things are going in. They seem to be luxury buildings being put in and not just housing. Housing is what is needed, not luxury housing. So, that's, uh, basically all I have. And I only accidentally ran into the fact that this was going on tonight, so I don't know how you spread the word about projects, but it, most people are unaware, so that must improve. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller.
Our next caller is Evelyn Perez. Evelyn Perez, you are now live with the planning board.
Okay. Good evening, planning board. Thank you very much for taking my call again. It looked like we had technical difficulties the first time. So I had just a couple of points. One was the visit that the members took. I'm glad you took that visit, because now you can see the discrepancy between the visit and the photos being presented in the report. As you can see, we have the Hollywood underpass Van Owen, and that is really a very difficult area to get around with the number of cars that they're looking to be leaving the parking structure and the office. At the same time, when you look at the pictures, you see mainly five-story buildings, and it looks really, really nice, but in reality, you're looking at seven-story buildings, and you're also looking at office buildings that are five stories. The other concern, which wasn't mentioned, uh, was regarding the mitig, mitig, mitigation, and I'm sorry if I pronounce it incorrectly, regarding the airport. We have a big airport that we seem to be avoiding there, okay? And one of the mitigations was that the buildings, I believe at least three, will need some kind of aircraft warning lights, and we have to make sure we don't have issues with birds. So again, we also need safety. I am not against the project, but I think it's way too big. Another comment was that they were providing, the applicant was providing money to look at the street, um, overflow, or whatever the word might be correctly, but the, your own trans, transportation report says there is going to be a problem. It's not potential. I find it interesting that this whole report, it's all about potential, could be, but in reality, it is. We don't seem to wanna face up, and I don't blame them, because you guys have been working on this for two years, and the residents did not know anything about it until February, when they quoted somebody, "Oh, we're just looking at a CPU study." So, I mean, I don't understand how this million, million, million-dollar project, we're treating it in the process like it was an addition to my home. I'm sorry for being upset, but this is, this is crazy! And I feel like I go down a black hole every time I go to the website. Thank you. Bye.
Thank you. Next caller.
Our next caller is Roy. Roy, you are now live with the planning board.
Hello. Good evening. Um, calling regarding the project there on Hollywood Way at the Frye's site. Um, so a few questions. I'm curious about a traffic study, uh, if one was done. Um, uh, there was a traffic study done for the Avion project right up the street. Um, many of you might know or might not know, I don't know, but, um, that, uh, study, the EIR, which was done for the Avion project, where Amazon has just moved in, uh, predicted 14 intersections will get a, a failing grade of F for traffic impacts. We already have that on, uh, on Hollywood Way and Quinny Vista, that study, I should say. We are already seeing impact on Hollywood Way, absolutely, from the Amazon trucks. I'm wondering if this was taken into consideration and a traffic study was done for this proposed project. Also, um, developer impact fees. Uh, we know that the city has lost millions of, of, not, that's not, not a type of millions on many projects, Talaria and many of the other builds, uh, compared to Pasadena and Glendale, what they charge per unit. It's about 18,000 and change. Burbank is around 2,000 and change for each unit in a project. Um, I wanna know if there's any talk of trying to right the ship, and why is Burbank giving away the store on that? Um, also, uh, there is the Golden State project. In addition to the Avion project, there's thousands more units, uh, coming to, uh, the airport area. Um, just wondering where the tipping point is for Hollywood Way, the traffic impacts, the congestion, um, and everything else. So, um, lastly, uh, water and power, especially water, as we're told that rash news coming. Um, I got rid of my yard 20 years ago before it was chic, but, uh, we do our best to save water, but massive projects like this, uh, that's gonna be another strain on already taxed, uh, city water supply. So, um, I know it's a lot of questions, but I'll leave you to it, and, uh, good evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please.
Our next caller is Ross Friedman. Ross Friedman, you are, are live with the planning board.
Good evening, planning board. This is Ross Freeman, actually.
This is Ross Freeman, actually, F R E E M A N, and I'm a part of the plumbers and HVAC union here in Southern California, and we'd like to extend our support for this project. Um, we've worked on several projects with this developer and have had great success with them, and it, it can't be perfect union, uh, but we have a lot of our members that live in the Burbank area and they are very excited to be working close to home to be building a project that has housing that they can afford eventually here as it's built, uh, both low income, medium income, and market rate. And I think it's a great project that diversifies the entire need of the community. We all know that Burbank needs, is in desperate need of more housing, and this is a developer that is taking a big risk on a big project to move forward, and we appreciate that. We support it and we're happy to be a part of it. That's it. Thank you, guys. Have a great night.
Thank you. There being no further public comment, I now declare the public comment period closed. Would the representative of the community development department like to make any further comments?
Hello? Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, poor member. Let me just go here through my notes. There's a lot of comments that were provided. Um, I think the, one of the first things, uh, one of the comments that came up was, uh, regarding, um, air quality. Um, one of, one of the, uh, conditions that are noted in the staff report that was given, um, as exhibit, uh, B fourteen, is that, um, uh, airs, a special type of air filters will, will be provided around, uh, throughout the site, which will mitigate any, um, any out, outdoor or outside pollutants from entering, um, the inside of the building. Um, so, that's something that has been conditioned as part of the project. There was a comment regarding, um, the validity of the density bonus as, as far as the, um, the CUP and the residential above, uh, commercial floor, um, when we evaluated the site. Because of the, um, the setbacks and some of the public right of ways and the parking that needs to be provided on site, that really reduces the area that is, um, available for, uh, residential units. So, that is why, um, some of the residential units are not only just above the commercial and they're built throughout the site. Um, so, that's one of the waivers that, uh, the applicant is proposing as part of the density bonus. And, uh, let me go here. Uh, there was, um, another comment about sidewalks. So, uh, the, the project is, um, going to redo all of the sidewalks on the, around the perimeter of the project site and will provide, uh, fifteen-foot wide sidewalks. Um, on the corner of, uh, Van Owen and Hollywood Way, there's gonna be a pedestrian crosswalk, so it's gonna be a light that allows for pedestrians to cross the street, uh, safely. And the ADA ramps along Van Owen on Hollywood Way are also gonna be upgraded as well. Um, there's gonna be, uh, new, um, ADA ramps there. Um, the Uber, um, the Uber sites will be, um, I mean, it's available to the, to the general public, so if somebody wants to use that site on the northwest corner, um, they can come in, get drop off there, and then, uh, use the MetroLink site if they like, or even the amenities that the project site itself is provided, or some of the other job sites around the area as well. Um, there was a comment regarding, uh, paid parking. Um, I'm actually going to defer to the developer on that one. I'm not sure exactly what, what the configuration's gonna be, uh, for that. There was a question about, uh, what kinds of housing, uh, low-income housing is gonna be provided. Uh, so, I stated in, in the previous documents and in the, in the presentation, eighty very low-income units, uh, are gonna be provided, so that's the type of, uh, how, uh, low-income housing that's gonna be provided as part of the project.
If I could just add, along with, with, uh, Maciel, Mr. Medina, is that very low income is a term defined, uh, to be within our metropolitan area, so it is a calculation that's readily identifiable, um, at, I think, below sixty percent, fifty percent below the area media income, which is defined as an area in Los Angeles County.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, there was another comment regarding, um, how, uh, the affordable housing will be, um, reviewed. So, there is also conditions in the, uh, conditions of approval in the project, uh, if you want to refer to exhibit B fifteen and B sixteen. Um, there's going to be a, a affordable housing agreement with the city, and, um, they need to have that, um, done, uh, before the certificate of occupants, occupancy is, um, issued to the project site. There was a comment regarding the stop sign going southbound on Hollywood Way. Uh, transportation did review this, um, stop sign, and, uh, they are going to work to reconfigure this, uh, this stop sign on Hollywood Way going southbound to make it safer. So, that's something that was looked at as well. Uh, there was a locate, um, a comment on the location of, of this project site. Um, as stated in the, um, presentation, it is at the former's Frye's site, so in between s- south of Van Owen Street, north of Valhalla, and, uh, west, um, of Hollywood Way. Again, there was another comment regarding the, uh, any, any traffic. Uh, so, the transportation analysis that was done as part of this project, uh, concluded that there would be no impacts, uh, due to traffic. Um, let's see here. Um, I, I, there were some questions regarding, uh, development impact fees. I may wanna defer to our assistant community director on that one when I'm done with this list here. Um, let's see here. And, uh, water supply assessment, uh, there was a water supply assessment done as part of the project as well. Um, I would actually like to refer to, uh, uh, our consultant that we use as part of this project that, that helped review. Um, it's, uh, environmental sciences, um, so I'll refer to them on that question as well. And, uh, there's a question on the noticing. So, there were several types of noticing that were done for this project. There was a, a thousand-foot, um, notice that went in the mail at least ten business days, uh, before today's hearing date. There was also a, a sign that was posted at three different locations around the site, around the site, so along Valhalla, Hollywood Way, and Van Owen, also, um, before the ten business days before this project, uh, this, uh, this hearing today. Um, there was also a, a notice placed in the LA Times, uh, also ten business days before this hearing date, and, uh, this project was also noticed on the city website at least ten, ten business days before, uh, this, this meeting. There was, uh, another question about the crosswalk along, um, Van Owen and Hollywood Way, so there's going to be a, a, a pedestrian crosswalk there as well. There was a question regarding safety and the height of the building. So, included in your packet, um, as exhibit E, there are approval letters from both the, uh, the FAA and the Airport Land Use Commission, which both found that there was no, um, there was no impacts as part of this project to the flight path or the airport. And, um, I think, I think that, um, covers most of it. I'm gonna refer now to the assistant community development director for the rest of the questions.
Thanks, Maciel. Just in follow-up, I, I just wanted to kinda highlight some things and, and also to request, um, the consultant team to be able to answer, uh, probably in a little bit more greater detail, uh, to kind of augment Maciel's comments as it relates to the letter that, uh, letter and comments that we received from Lizelle Drury, uh, in particular regarding the SCA, Sustainable Communities Environmental Assessment. But, um, o- one thing to add, uh, 'cause it was brought up during the public comment was far as noticing to the legal counsel for some of these, uh, union groups. That was provided, I believe, last week, uh, forwarding them the notice that, that Maciel posted, and I just wanted to refer to the fact that, uh, even if there was some, you know, alleged inadequacies as far as the noticing time, there was sufficient, uh, information available, and as you noted tonight, uh, they were commenting, so they were well aware of the fact that there was a, an, uh, a project of this magnitude, this particular project, being considered tonight. So, if there was an issue with noticing, clearly that wa- didn't affect their ability to, uh, be here today, comment on the project, but we feel that we've, uh, substantially complied with the requirements for notification as required under state law. Uh, in addition to that, I wanted to, um, also point out, when it came to, uh, there was a reference regarding, uh, traffic study that was done for the Avion project versus the analysis that was done for this particular project, and I think the important thing to note is that I believe in July of, uh, what's this year, the regulations changed as far as how we analyze, um, uh, transportation impacts, uh, potentially from a project, including the concept of vehicle miles traveled to comply with SB three seventy-five. And, uh, transit priority projects or transit-oriented projects in proximity to, uh, transit stations are actually, uh, favored or encouraged to be developed in the manner as proposed. Uh, we have our assistant director, David Criskie, that deals in transportation planning. He is more well-versed and will give you kind of a more detailed assessment, so I'll call on him soon thereafter, but the analysis required under SEQA was done, and it was determined that this project, as it related to the residential, was consistent with the goals and objectives that were sought under the SB three seventy-five Sustainable Communities Environmental Assessment. It's important to note that part of the analysis that we did as far as operational analysis and what that means from a traffic standpoint, did look at the potential for some cut-through traffic through the neighborhood, and there is a condition actually on the project consistent with our general plan that deals on addressing neighborhood protection. So, the developer's actually, um, going, is conditioned to actually provide, uh, two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars towards not only design but eventual implementation of any mitigation that's required or any, any, to address any potential cut-through traffic. And that type of, uh, implementation or work would be done consistent with the city's general plan, and there's a whole section in the mobility element that talks about how that would go about. Some of you may be familiar with, you know, some of the things that have been done, like in the case of, uh, the Talaria project and, you know, where they, where they've done some, uh, physical improvements to mitigate, uh, to address some of those impacts. So, that is part of it. Uh, in addition to that, there was a discussion regarding amenities, and I think Maciel touched on most, but, um, I wanted to point out some that are really key, and I think, uh, Ms. Takahashi might have, uh, referred to those or asked a question. So, there are two paseos that run through the property, kind of east-west, north-south, one of which is in alignment with Greenland. That is a paseo. It's not a private road because our general plan actually, uh, uh, you know, discourages the creation of private roads. It actually wants either driveways with paseos, uh, publicly accessible to the main right-of-way. So, in lieu of that, what they did is they developed, uh, paseos that are wide enough to allow for ingress and egress for fire life safety as required, but in addition to that, what they did is they, uh, created decorative pavers and designated areas for a bike path that would, is publicly accessible, so bike and path that would, instead of allowing you to, instead of requiring you to go around the property, you can actually now cut through the property to get from the neighborhood south of the site to the MetroLink station in more of a direct fashion. So, I wanted to bring that up as well. Uh, in addition to, excuse me, in addition to some of the other operational things that were identified, there are a handful of conditions incorporated into the project that deal with ADA accessibility, uh, with the sidewalks, um, some additional, uh, off-site improvements to adjacent right-of-way to improve, uh, visibility for cars entering and exiting the project. Uh, we also evaluated, uh, car turning movements and the ability for cars to get around vehicular traffic that's going into the driveways. Uh, based on feedback from our engineering division, both in traffic, civil, as well as transportation planning, is the driveways that were originally proposed in the original design were actually moved further away from the corner to address queuing issues and safety issues, and now you have internal circulation to the property in a manner that, uh, complies with our requirements, uh, and also provides sufficient parking both for any future retail, commercial use. The offices is to code, uh, to the city zoning code requirements. The residential, as noted, is within the range that's allowed under state density bonus law. They've actually put it to the upper threshold of what's allowed, uh, so that they could have units, uh, of different and varying sizes, including, uh, zero, one, two, and three-bedroom units, so there is variety there. Uh, as far as the inclusionary requirements, they comply with those requirements as well as density bonus. They're providing eighty units of very low income, fifty percent of area median income as the city attorney noted, which is, uh, some of the lower, more affordable units that we've developed over the last four and a half years. In addition to that, those units are deed-restricted for fifty-five years, and the city, through that affordable housing agreement, is responsible for, uh, monitoring, ongoing compliance with those units so that they're being maintained for eligible households during that fifty-five-year period. Uh, a special note, I think some of you are familiar, I think we've had similar discussions in the past, that if the city were to go and attempt to build out eighty units at what we've estimated to be about five hundred thousand dollars, that's worth a forty million dollars. So, in essence, the developer has a condition on the project and to get the density that they're seeking will be building and, and retaining those units to the benefit of future residents, uh, the intent being that putting residential in proximity to an employment center and transit may also result in the capture of people that currently have to drive from out of the city into the city and add to congestion on the roadways that were noted. Uh, it is a unique situation when it comes to Hollywood Way for this particular property in that this lot is actually raised above the primary roadway, and there's an overpass on Van Owen. Uh, so, uh, we anticipate that, you know, uh, the more we can encourage this type of transit-oriented development, the fact that it is a trans, transit priority project under SB three thirty is also an important thing to note, and that is that, under state law, there are limitations as to what can be imposed on a project. Specifically, uh, we have to ensure that we can only apply objective development standards, and that's for zoning as well as for the subdivision, uh, and any objective standards that are called out as it relates to the city's general plan, so, si- you know, width of sidewalks, setbacks, heights. Uh, I think there was some discussion or a question from one of the, uh, one of the commenters tonight as to the fact that the waiver for ground-floor live-work units, uh, didn't meet the test. It's staff's assessment that the live-work units need a ground-floor entrance to be able to function for commercial purposes. In addition to that, uh, the general plan actually encourages the, it's the inclusion of live-work units. So, when you look at that and you look at the fact that they've got to dedicate la- uh, land adjacent to the property, which reduces the footprint, the fact that we have limitations attributed to FAA height requirements, and the fact that you have still to park the project and provide all the amenities, it's staff's assessment, and there is no other record to the contrary, that the waiver request, uh, reduces a physical impediment to facilitate the building of the units in compliance with state law. Uh, and in addition to that, and bear with me, I know this is kind of a long thing, but we had a lot of comments, so hopefully this'll help address things. There was a question regarding development impact fees. As I noted before, under SB three thirty, the preliminary application that came in back in January, you have a, a copy of when that application came in, in essence freezes the, the, what we can apply to the project and also what the fees that we can charge. So, uh, we are working to update the development impact fees, and we're actually working with our colleagues in transportation planning and other departments, as well as the city attorney, uh, so that we can complete what's called a nexus study. So, we have to verify that what we're gonna charge as a fee is commensurate with potential project impacts, and that is based on capital improvements that are necessary to assess development moving forward, and that is in the process of being prepared, but, uh, as it notes for this particular project, the, uh, frozen-in-time situation occurs when they submit their application, which was earlier part of the year. Uh, in addition to that, um, wanted to note, uh, just a few more things, so bear with me, and that is, um, to talk specifically, after I turn it over to, uh, the consultants, 'cause I do want them to, uh, respond directly to, uh, the Drury letter, uh, I, I also think it would benefit, and I'll, I'll provide a brief, but, uh, I believe if they can kind of elaborate, to be responsive to Ms. Evelyn Perez's questions, uh, I'll, I'll say this, and that is, um, in general, to Ms. Perez's questions, she had a question regarding, uh, fees that are, fees that are being charged and how that offsets the potential impact of the project. So, uh, per the city's general plan, that was adopted back in twenty thirteen, uh, it was analyzed and we looked at a projected growth of fifty-nine hundred units. With that, they evaluated what the level of service was for the different, uh, service providers, including Fire PD. Uh, they also looked at the capacity for the school district, uh, and, um, in light of all that, the determination was that based on the development impact fees that are in place, based on the ongoing analysis that's done on a yearly basis by the different, uh, internal departments within the city related to public services, as well as Burbank Unified Schools District's, uh, preparation, I believe it's annually, of what their school district fee is and how they analyze that nexus, that the payment of the fees that are in place at the time, uh, both twenty thirteen to now... both 2013 to now, adequately addressed the service demands attributed to any building of infrastructure that has to be done as it relates to these projects. So this particular project, in paying the fees, both the fees to the city and the development impact fees, and the fees to the school district, school district fees, in essence meets its obligation to address its fair share impact to both the city and the school district. And of course, we can go into the vacancies, you know, the out-of, out-of-city credits that are allowed for people to come in to the school district, because we have, in essence, the ability to bring in students from the outside. So there is capacity. It's being filled right now through this alternate process. But it's our understanding that, like I said, as far as compliance with the law, they do that through the school district fee. And last but not least, because we've got quite a bit of feedback, before I turn it over to ESA and also the city attorney, if he wants to add anything. I wanted to speak directly to the, the comments that were received from the unions. In particular, I believe we heard reference to, the city should require a community wealth policy, and we understand, and we totally, wholeheartedly understand that, you know, healthcare is important, that, you know, apprenticeship is important to the union, that, you know, pensions, vacation, sick leave, and local hire are important components to the union. And as far as compliance with labor law, which, you know, a developer would have to do or be in violation of, of state requirements, at a minimum, let alone any sort of federal restrictions that may apply. And what I would say is this, is as I led in initially, this particular project is an SB 330 project, right? It's a, it's a, it's not only that, it's also a density bonus project. So as you all are well aware, and we've had some of these projects come before you, the cities, the city is limited to applying the standards that are on the books. Objective standards in our zoning code, objective standards that apply to development in our city code, including the subdivision. And beyond that, the city, at least staff in analyzing the project and conditioning it, is very limited. So I would say that, as much as those are noteworthy efforts, absent them being objective standards in the code, we can't apply those to this particular project. And with that said, oh, one last thing, I think it was asked, as far as the very low income, I said it's 50% of the area median income, and what that would mean for a family of four is, for someone in the county, it would mean no more income than $59,100 for a four-person family to be able to be there. And then, of course, it goes up or down from that range, depending on the number of family members within the household. So with that said, I believe Kimberly Camacho is on the line, and Kimberly, if you can talk to the jury letter and comments, as well as maybe elaborate, as I mentioned, DIFs and how they meet their obligation, to maybe talk more specifically or directly to Ms. Perez's comments.
Okay, sounds good. Good evening, board members. My name is Kimberly Camacho, with Environmental Science Associates, and I'm the project manager for the environmental document. First, I wanted to go into the water supply assessment, which Maciel had mentioned that we would discuss more. A water supply assessment was prepared for the project and included in the SCA. The report calculated the project's water use and impacts to water supply were evaluated. Impacts were found to be less than significant. Also, being LEED certified, the project would implement water-saving features to reduce consumption of water supply, and would be required to comply with the city's low-impact development requirements. This would also reduce water use on-site. Finally, the WSA was reviewed and approved by the Burbank Water and Power Department. And then, moving on to the LaZelle jury letter, I have our air quality director, Alan Sacco, who will speak to that right now.
Good evening. My name is Alan Sacco, Director of Air Quality for ESA. I'll speak to the air quality issues that were raised during the comments. So regarding the issue of formaldehyde, there was a study that was cited in the letter, which looked at formaldehyde concentrations in indoor air quality. So the study utilized monitoring data that was conducted during around the 2008 time period. So these were homes that were built to previous California building standards. At that time, they would have been the Title 20, 2008 Title 24 building standards for new homes. The report, you know, did note that, you know, at that time period, there were not regulations specifically for controlling formaldehyde emissions from wood products in particular. Those regulations, which have been adopted by the California Air Resources Board, came into effect in 2009. It actually came in two phases. Phase one is the phase that began in 2009. Currently, the current version are called Phase Two regulations. They are controlled, they control the amount of formaldehyde that's included in various wood products and other products sold within the state of California. Secondly, I wanted to note that, the report does note that, with improved building standards, which currently are the 2019 Title 24 building standards, new indoor air circulation requirements have improved air circulation within buildings, and so that has an improved effect on reducing the concentration of pollutants within buildings. So coupled with the new building standards, as well as the Phase One and Phase Two California Air Resources Board standards for controlling emissions such as formaldehyde, the state has deemed that those regulations are protective of health and of the public health. With respect to the comment that was raised for diesel particulate matter emissions, the SCA did analyze health risks from diesel particulates and found that the impacts would be less than significant. I did review the analysis that was provided in the comment letter with regards to diesel particulate matter, and found that their analysis contained a number of errors. Specifically, I'll note two, two areas which had fairly egregious errors. One is that the analysis had overestimated substantially the amount of diesel particulate matter that would be emitted by the project. Their analysis was a little difficult to determine, as it wasn't clear as to every assumption that they had made, but from what I can see, they had essentially assumed that all emissions would be, all particulate emissions would be diesel, as opposed to, in reality, where most of the vehicle emissions, for example, are from gasoline-fueled vehicles rather than diesel. Secondly, the analysis that was in the comment letter did not take into account any sort of geographic or spatial distribution of the emissions. In particular, again, for mobile sources, their analysis had assumed all mobile source emissions were occurring in a concentrated area on the project site. In reality, motor vehicles are traveling along the regional roadway network, where most of their emissions are, are happening, you know, miles away from the site, so they're not concentrated in any, in any specific area. So taking those two errors, actually, in my view, and in my professional view, results in an analysis that's about 100 times worse than, or more than it would be if those factors are accounted for. And so when those considerations are accounted for, it's clear that the impacts would be less than significant, as was determined in the SCA. Thank you. I'll turn it back to Kimberly to close out.
Thank you, Alan. And so, in regards to the commenters' claim that all feasible mitigation measures must be applied to the project, we provided a full response to this comment in the response to comments document under Letter Six and Response Six dash Three. As we discussed in that document, the project's consistency with the applicable mitigation measures is contained in a series of three tables in Chapter Four of the SCA. SCAG determined that a lead agency can and should consider these mitigation measures as applicable and feasible, where the lead agency has identified that a project has the potential for significant effects. SCAG does not require implementation of all feasible mitigation measures, as the commenters suggest, but rather leaves the decision of inclusion of these measures at the discretion of the lead agency. So as I mentioned, the tables included in Chapter Four include a discussion of the mitigation measures, and whether they apply to the project. It identifies regulations that apply, that supersede the identified mitigation measure, and where there's a potential project impact, it identifies mitigation that would apply. So while these mitigation measures may not be the exact mitigation measure identified in the SCAG program EIRs, they do incorporate elements of the measures where feasible, and other project-specific recommendations to reduce, to reduce potential impacts to less than significant. And per SEQA guidelines, Section 15126.4A3, mitigation measures are required for effects which are found, or sorry, which are not found to be significant. So contrary to what the commenter is claiming, the project would incorporate all feasible mitigation and meets the requirements of, of this code. And I think I also need to respond to a letter from Evelyn Perez on the SCA. In her letter, she has some concerns to the impact of local communities for fire, police, and schools. We included a discussion of the impacts to the fire protection emergency services, to the police protection services, and to the schools in the SCA. We sent out letters to all these agencies to get their feedback on the project's potential impacts on, in the city, and, you know, it was, while the project would potentially increase call volumes and service calls for the fire department and the police department, you know, they are paying the, the impact fee required by Title 10, Article 22 of the Burbank Municipal Code. So what SEQA requires with payment of those fees, all impacts would be reduced to less than significant. And similar to fire and police, for the schools, they would be required to comply with AB 2926 and SB 50, which allows school districts to collect development impact fees. And according to our California Government Code, Section 65996, payment of these fees is considered full mitigation for new development projects. And that, that's all I have. Was there anything else you wanted us to respond to, Fred?
Kimberly, can you also respond to the impact to local communities that she identifies as far as traffic?
Oh, of course. So the SCA provided an analysis of traffic impact, or transportation impacts, as required by SEQA. While the transportation study notes that Maple Street, Kenwood Street, Screenland Drive, and Pepper Drive may receive some cut-through traffic as a result of the project, it does not identify that this is an impact, and SEQA does not require the impacts from cut-through traffic be analyzed. Throughout this process, there were many opportunities for the public to provide input on the project, including, including the development review meeting, a 30-day public review period for the SCA, and this current hearing. The analysis in the SCA provides an adequate discussion of the potential environmental impacts of the project, and impacts were overall determined to be less than significant, with inclusion of a few mitigation measures. So given this discussion and impact determination, additional analysis, as requested in the comment letter, is not warranted.
Thank you.
Thank you. Does the applicant or the representative wish to make any further comments? You'll have a maximum time of 10 minutes.
The applicant would like to make a few comments. I'm going to, this is Charlie Turtalot, President and CEO of Lutera. I'm going to make just a couple of short responses to a couple of the calls, and then I'm going to turn it over to Dale Goldsmith on some other comments. First, let me just say that with regard to labor, Lutera has enjoyed a really good and long relationship with labor, and I'll use the Front Street project as the best example. So we have, you know, you may remember, actually, almost two years ago, we got approved for that project, and the council chambers was packed and full of, of, you know, laypeople in hard hats and vests, so. And I'll just say thank you to the, the laborers and, and Largo Concrete, and, and also to the, to the guys who called in from the HVAC guys. So, look, we have a, we have a very good relationship with organized labor, and not sure what the, what the, you know, the, the framers, the, those guys were talking about. I mean, a lot of that sounded scripted to me, so I'm not really sure where they were coming from, but, but we have a good support. And by the way, we had 52 support letters on this project, at last count, that I knew. So I don't know if that got said, but, and just weighing, you know, kind of balancing the calls with some really strong support letters. Want to say that Lutera scrupulously adheres to all the labor laws on all of its projects, right? So just want to make sure that's clear, and, and that we categorically reject the insinuation that we or any of our contractors engage in any unfair labor practices. So I just want to make sure that that's clear. And now, I'll turn it over to Dale Goldsmith.
Good evening, honorable board members. My name is Dale Goldsmith. I'm a partner with the law firm of Arberster, Goldsmith, and Delvac. Want to commend staff and the city's consultant team for a very thorough response. I don't have much to add, but I'll offer a couple of small items. The carpenters suggested that requiring a local skilled workforce would mitigate, is necessary to mitigate the project's GHG, air quality, and vehicle miles traveled, or VMT impacts. But the SCA has substantial evidence showing that the project will not result in any such significant impacts. Without having a significant impact, there's simply no need for any mitigation at all. Regarding a requirement for COVID mitigation, also requested by the carpenters, you know, COVID safety is a workplace safety issue. It's governed by applicable state, county, and city health and safety regulations. It is simply not a SEQA issue, and does not need to be included in any of the conditions of approval for the project. In addition, regarding Mr. Flynn's letter, I would like to point out that Safer, or whatever they call themselves, did not provide any substantive comments to the SCA during the statutory comment period, rather they waited till 5:15 on Friday and dropped a 91-page letter. Fortunately, the city staff and consultant team worked diligently over the weekend and today to go through the letter, and as Kimberly and Alan of ESA comprehensively stated, the letter's arguments are utterly without merit and should be rejected. Regarding traffic, a couple people talked about traffic. Fred elaborated on it. I would like to just underscore that in 2020, the state changed the methodology for assessing traffic impacts from level of service, the old-fashioned way, to vehicle miles traveled. And they did that in order to help the state achieve its greenhouse gas reduction goals, because vehicle miles traveled is very closely associated with greenhouse gas emissions. The project will support the state's climate protection goals by being located in great proximity to transit, including the MetroLink station, including bus lines, including the airport. It will also include ample bike parking. It'll create new bike lanes, including public bike lanes through the middle of the project. And it will also unbundle its parking to help encourage people further to use transit. And therefore, the SCA properly concluded that the project's vehicle miles traveled or VMT impacts is less than significant. Lastly, I just want to reiterate, somebody said what, you know, asked what about the, what type of units would be the affordable units pursuant to the city requirements? The affordable units, 80 very low-income units, would mirror the project's unit mix, so therefore would include, and that mix includes studios, one bedrooms, two bedrooms, and three bedrooms. So there will be affordable housing for, for not just individual tenants, but potentially for families as well. Thank you for your consideration. We would respectfully request that you follow the recommendations of the very comprehensive staff report and approve the project tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments? Does the board have any questions for staff or the applicant? If you can just raise your hand. Mr. Attacani?
Yes, thank you, Vice Chair Rosario. I have some questions for the applicant. Not sure who's going to respond, but I'll ask the question anyway. What other uses were considered prior to submitting what you have submitted here, or for what we're reviewing here today? Who would like to answer that question from the applicant?
I can address that question with regards to what other uses were considered. Burbank is in a severe housing crisis. The city set a goal of 12,000 units over the next eight years. It is our mission to help solve that housing crisis, both by creating market-rate housing and affordable housing. and affordable housing for all unit types and sizes. So that's our primary objective. Second, we're directly adjacent to a MetroLink station, which is really the perfect opportunity to create and provide housing, to get vehicles off the road, reduce greenhouse gas emissions, and allow people to live where they work. So from our perspective, housing was the number one priority, and, and that was the use we always had in mind. We think the best use and opportunity for the site, which we really aimed to maximize here.
Well, that kind of helps, helps me lead into the second part of my question, which is, or second question. You've proposed two office buildings along with this, with the housing that you're providing or, or building, the eight hundred and sixty-two units. By the way, on your website, it shows eight hundred and sixty-three units. You may want to visit that. What is the determining factor in reaching a final decision as to which option you will choose as far as the office building configuration? Whether it is going to be the four-story building or is it going to be the five-story building? What will be the factors in determining as to which option you will select to implement?
Yeah, thank you. That's, that's a good question. It's really going to depend on market demand. We think both layouts work well for the site. They're both good configurations. They both have adequate and, and strong parking ratios. So we're going to have to just see what, what the market, you know, desires. And it's really just going to be, be a market related decision. The smaller kind of office campus use to us felt good in the post-COVID world, where tenants may want to have and occupy their own building. There's more areas to walk around and sort of be separate from adjacent users. So that's sort of what we had in mind with that design. And then the larger office building, we think would work really well for, for a media tenant. Clearly, this is the media capital of the world, and we think that design would work well for a single tenant or a large media tenant. And so we, we have that flexibility, and we'll see sort of what the market demands as we get through COVID and move on to two thousand and twenty-two and beyond.
No, right, I, I misstated four and five stories. It's three and five stories. But the other question I had is, will the office building, regardless of which one you decide to go with, will that be designed in a way where it could be in the future, go through some adaptive use if necessary?
Yeah, we would, we would design it in such a way that it could be modified and, you know, adapted as we move forward. Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. And, and you've applied for subdivision, and it's three parcels, as I see it. Why, why do you feel that it's necessary to divide the properties if the zoning is not going to be changing on any of the parcels?
Well, the office building would be on its own parcel. And investors typically invest in either, let's say, office or apartments, but not necessarily both. And then the, the project is large, and so we have kind of a north and south phase, or two phases, kind of north, east, west-ish, that would potentially contemplate two different construction lenders. And so really, it's just kind of a financing thing. That's, that's really what's driving the desire to have these separate legal parcels.
Because I noticed that you also did this with the Front Street project. Is, are you going to, is it your intention or the developer's intention to sell these, you know, piecemeal later in the future? Or is it your intention to hold down to this project, to this asset?
Yeah, I'm glad, I'm glad you, glad you asked that question. As we exhibited on our Front Street project, we're, we're building the project. This isn't an entitled and sell scenario. We're long-term holders. We know that our projects are going to become an integral part of the fabric of the community. And so, no, that is not our intent. And just like Front Street, we're going to build, build these projects.
Have you contemplated security for the project with all the open spaces and being close to the airport, and there's a great deal of activity in the area?
Yes, yep, that's in our operating expense budget. We'll certainly have security for both the apartment phases and the office phase. I think that's important and a good idea.
Yeah, board member, you turned off your mic.
I'm sorry.
There you go.
Well, I'm trying to, the, the tablet, you're trying to manage the tablet. What type of security are you planning to implement there?
Well, we, we engage a security firm, you know, they, they walk around and they effectively just monitor, you know, the properties. We have lighting as another source of security. Cameras is another source of security. So we use, you know, cameras and, you know, physical people walking around to keep the area safe. And that's something we do on all of our projects.
Okay. On exhibit D one dash thirty-four, you don't need to go to the exhibit. I'll just describe it for you, the balconies. There's a requirement that it be four foot high wall of some sort for noise mitigation. Now, when we take a look at the plans, we see a nice plexiglass. Is that the intent? Is the plexiglass is what's going to be the final product that's going to be placed there as for the balconies?
I'm going to hand that over to our architect, Richard.
Hi there. Sorry, this is Richard Solares. So the, the intent is to obviously meet the sound mitigation measures, but also keep the views open. So therefore, we're looking at using a glass railing behind the decorative members. And that will keep the balcony feeling open visually, but also create the sound mitigation that we're going to be required to through this SCA.
So I guess the answers to my question would be yes. As we see it in the pictures, the depiction of the drawings, architectural drawings, that's what's going to be the final product.
That's correct.
Okay. All right. Are the parking, I, I couldn't, perhaps I missed it or didn't pay enough attention with the volume of papers involved in this. It's, it's quite a project. Are the parking going, is the parking going to be blacktop or concrete?
Concrete.
Even the open parking spaces?
So the only parking spaces that may be asphalt are the Uber drop-off spaces at the far northwest corner of the site that are open to the sky. All the other spaces are essentially in a parking structure and therefore part of the concrete construction.
Okay, I hope you don't mind me suggesting making all parking surfaces or driving surfaces concrete. What is the estimated cost of the project?
Sorry, this is funny. We keep going back and forth. It's, you know, in today's environment, the total cost of this project is eclipsing four hundred million and getting close to five hundred million dollars.
Now, considering that you've taken on two projects, which is commendable, everyone's working very hard and probably morning, noon, and night, how are you going to manage this financially? Are you going to be able to meet all the obligations under, under both project conditions?
That's a good question. You sound like our investor. No, it's, it really, though, it's, it's a good question.
I could be.
Let me, let me jump in here real quick.
Answers, yes, we will.
Board member, just look.
Fantastic team. You're right. We work really hard around the clock. These projects are staggered a bit in that we're now at the bottom of the hole on Front Street. We're going vertical. We're in the entitlement process, obviously, on the Fry's Electronics location. And then we'll need to advance our construction drawings, which takes some time, get through plan check, and commence construction. By the time that happens, the Front Street project will be much further along, and so we'll, we'll allocate resources accordingly. But it's a good question. They're both big. It's, you know, big total project budgets, but we've got, you know, a great, a great team to make it happen and financing, and so we're, we're going to make it happen.
What's your estimated time for breaking ground on this project?
Sure, third, third or fourth quarter of two thousand and twenty-two. So as soon as we obtain our approvals, we're going to immediately commence our architecture drawings, get them into plan check. The planning department's been fantastic to work with, and, and we'll, we'll move expeditiously to get underway to, to help bring some more housing online as quick as we can.
All right, thank you.
Sure, thank you.
Does any other board members have questions for staff or the applicant?
Hi, this is Bob Monaco. I'm just wondering, because I came a little late to this game. Has this project?
Mr. Monaco, we can barely hear you. Either step closer to your microphone or speak a little louder, please.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, great. Has this project been submitted to the Arts and Public Spaces Commission? I don't think they've seen this.
Yeah, I think that's probably a question for staff. So, board member Monaco, so what'll, what'll happen is, i- if, if it were to be entitled and it were to then at that point start developing plans, then one of their conditions of approval is that they would actually go through the process with Parks and Rec personnel and us, and eventually make a proposal for consideration by the committee as far as it relates to arts and public places. So, not to get too ahead of us, it still depends on your deliberation. But yeah, it's, it would be, it's a condition on the project.
Okay, cool. That's all I, it's my liaison job. Thank you.
Ms. Hyner, do you have any questions? Ms. Hyner, do you have any questions?
Oh, I'm good. Thank you.
I now declare the public hearing closed, and the planning board will now deliberate. What is the planning board's pleasure?
Okay, Vice Chair Rosario, I can go first.
Board, board member Attacanian, please. Thank you.
Thank you. The, the design, I, I think it's a, it's a great, it's a nice design. It's very appealing. It is a vast improvement on what we currently have there. And I think the number of units that are being proposed and added to the stock are welcome. But I mean, not everything starts and ends there. Just because the number of units added doesn't mean that, okay, automatically, it's a great project. I mean, I should have asked this question perhaps of the architect when I had the chance, but I perhaps missed the opportunity in the midst of all the notes I have here. I, I didn't quite, I, I, I think there could be better window treatment on the project. Some of the walls are just bare and just the windows on there. I think it could, it could elevate the design that we could, that design element could elevate the quality of the project because currently it's somewhat unremarkable. It's just a suggestion. Obviously, the design is the design, but I think it could use a little bit better treatment for a better enunciation of the, the windows and, and treat that area, that flat wall, just a bit better and incorporate it into the rest of the building more seamlessly. Now, let me see here. As, as far as the project goes, oh, I did notice an error on page twenty-nine of five F. And I presume that should read that the design of the subdivision or type of improvement is not likely to cause se- a, a serious public health problem. So I just wanted to make a note of that so that it doesn't go into the record as is because the, the way it reads, it says, oh, improvements is likely to cause. And I think it's meant to say not to cause, if I'm not mistaken.
Board member Attacanian, I'm sorry. What, what page did you noting?
That's five F on page twenty-nine, I think. The, the, the heading, the heading, it reads that the design of the subdivision or type of improvement is likely to cause serious public health problems. And I would presume it should read not likely to cause. But, because I didn't want the record to stand away was, if, if I'm, if I'm wrong, ignore that comment. If not, then hopefully the record can be corrected as to that.
So, Mr. Vice Chair and board members, those findings are specific to the Subdivision Map Act. And the Subdivision Map Act is, the findings are kind of stated in the reverse. What it says is no map shall be approved if the agency finds. And then it states these tests kind of in the negative. So if you look at the very front of that section, that's F. If you go to page twenty-three, three A. Oh, nope, a little ahead of myself. Oh, twenty-seven, under five. A legislative body of a city or county shall deny approval of a tentative map or a parcel map for which a tentative map was not required if it makes any of the following findings. So if you make one of those negative findings, then you could deny the map. And then staff has the analysis. That's just how our code and how the Subdivision Map Act is written.
Thank you, Mr. Madugos. I did suspect something there, but I just wanted to bring it up anyway.
We, we had that same discussion as the staff report was being prepared.
Thank you. So, and, and, and I just wanted to point out that there were some inconsistencies as to the, the height of the building, which I, I don't find an issue with because at, at one point, there was a statement in the report that it's eighty-eight, eighty-eight feet limitation, but in another place that the height was ninety-four feet and so forth and so on. I'm sure that will all get sorted out as, as we adopt the resolution and, and, and that would all be addressed. So in, in that regard, I mean, it, it's commendable for a project of this size, and, and I commend staff for going through a project of this size, making the presentation. And I also commend the developer for the commitment that they have. I mean, you can see we have two projects here, almost going on simultaneously, on track, going on simultaneously. And, and I think it will be a great benefit to Burbank and the citizen of Burbank, the city itself. And, and I understand that it is going to be somewhat taxing on the services, but at the same time, those are taken into consideration, are mitig, and, and are mitigated. So in that regard, I, I would also want to point out that the, I did mention the, the window treatment. I don't know why that's kind of like, I go back to that because I, I, it, it, I recall the projects on, on the hotels that were constructed, the Hilton and the Holiday Inn, and, and, and they too lack the window treatment, and, and it looks so bland, where perhaps some type of features or colors or scheme or anything that kind of incorporate some seamless, I guess, bringing the, the, the project together. It seems like a piece there just by itself. So maybe perhaps something that kind of like connects it better to the rest of the project. I understand it's modern, but at the same times, things can be done to accentuate it or, or make it more palatable. So I'm able to make the findings, that's on page twenty, and, and I mean articulated them from page twenty to twenty-nine. And I will be in support of, of this project moving forward and the, and the two resolutions that are up for our consideration this evening.
Thank you.
If I can just make, if I can just make one more comment. When I was at the site during the tour, one of the things I mentioned was that at any one time, there could be a population at this site of about twelve hundred to fifteen hundred people during the day between the office space, the residential space, the workplace, and there's only ninety-seven hundred square feet of retail space, and most of that is going to be a restaurant. And I was just, I mean, I'm supporting the project. I think it's a, a great project and a good positive for Burbank, but I am always concerned about having what I call the residential desert. You know, we've heard about food deserts where, you know, there's, there's, you don't have access to a grocery store or anything else like that. But here, it's just straight, if you want a quart of milk, you're going to have to get in the car and drive. So I think there was some discussion about traffic, but you're still going to have a lot of people having to get into a car to go get basic services because I, I have walked around there, and there really is a whole lot of basic services. So that was my only comment to them. They sort of said, well, they had enough. I don't know, I just, I would like to have seen more retail space, especially oriented to the everyday. to have seen more retail space, especially oriented to the everyday type of living in a project like this.
Thank you. Board Member Heiner, would you like to deliberate, insert yourself in the deliberation here?
Sure. Yeah, I, I think it's a, it's a good-looking building. It's, it's in a great spot. I think it's going to be a, a plus for Burbank to have this. This would be the place to put it, and replacing a, a square box of, you know, looking like blight. So I, I, I'm, I'm, I'm in support of this.
Okay, thank you. So my thoughts are, as, as some of the other board members have said, it, it definitely transforms a tired site and brings some, some life and design to it. The fact that it brings housing to our community, it's in a transit zone, it is an SB 3030 project, but I don't feel like, like we're, our hands are, are strapped necessarily. There's a lot of givebacks in this project. The, the extended sidewalks, the charging stations, the bike lanes, the utilities, the underground utilities, just basic infrastructure. So I, I think that, that shows a, a working with our community, the, between the, the community and the developer in our city, and I appreciate that. Not like some of the other projects where they're coming in with a Senate bill and, and at the bare minimum. In this case, the project is overparked, can, which is again, another plus. I think all these things help the project be a winner. If the project was just a stripped-down version of what they could do, the project would probably be a loser, and, and so would the community. So I think it's just pride of ownership and pride of building. There's 283 conditions of approval in there. I went through each of those. I agree with those. I don't see any others I would add. For the benefit of the community, while I was at the job site, my concerns were ingress and egress from Hollywood Way and Valhalla, and those concerns were addressed. I do see that there is plenty of direction for cars to move around, and I think that the, the main interest is going to be off Valhalla because of the overpass and the way you swing around on Hollywood Way. So I do, and there's ways, there is going to be a, a cutback off the road of Hollywood Way, so if somebody, they could queue into the complex if they wanted to without impeding traffic. So those are some of my, and I, and I really needed to see that at the site. I'm glad I did, because it does make a big difference when you're at the site and looking at, especially Hollywood Way. Some of the other concerns I had were, how are tenants going to move into the project? Are they going to park their U-Haul on Hollywood Way? Are they going to park it on Valhalla? I've seen some projects in our community where we didn't think about that, and that's exactly where U-Hauls are parked, or are parked on, in the major thoroughfare. So in this instance, there are designated move-in, move-out spots within the development. So overall, I think it was very well thought out. I had all my concerns addressed. I commend all of staff, Mr. Medina and Mr. Ramirez, this, this is a huge project. There, there was a lot of paperwork. There was a lot of time spent here by everyone, so I commend everyone on, on wrapping your arms around this and bringing this to our community and for us to deliberate tonight. Any further comments?
Vice Chair Rosati, if I may?
Yes.
I, I guess the compilation of everything that took place tonight, with, with the calls that came in, with, with the different codes and the sections and the, and statutes and the Senate bills and so forth and so on, and our time here, kind of demonstrates why, why we, why we don't have sufficient housing in California. The, the process itself becomes a very difficult one with all the different requirements that are set on developers. I'm not suggesting that there shouldn't be any. What I, what I've been suggesting is, as time went on, the restrictions have become more onerous, more demanding, more technical, so it becomes difficult to, to create housing as easily as we could be, I guess. So anyway, that's just getting on my soapbox, but thank you for the time.
I understand. And, you know, I, I also want to just say, I, the callers that called in that are concerned about traffic and concerned about congestion, concerned about water, concerned about fire and police, and we hear you. We understand. Our community is changing. I would strongly suggest that everyone educate yourself on what's happening in, 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 in our state with our local zoning laws being taken away from us and kind of being force-fed Senate bills that, that are creating housing and creating density. So there, there are concerns about that. I, I get that, but I strongly suggest that you, you, you start educating yourself on what, what our cities face with, what we're faced with as planning board members, and what our city council is faced with coming down the pike from, from Sacramento. Any other questions, comments, thoughts? If not, I will entertain a motion. If anyone would like to make a motion. Ms. Heiner, Mr. Monaco, let's, let's have you guys make a motion.
You worded them so well, Mr. Rosati. I invite you to do it. How do you do the motion for 200 and something resolutions?
What's that?
You, you worded them so well. I'm not sure how to do the right wording for the 200 and something resolutions.
So you, you're simply making a motion, and you're going to read, read, and I'm trying to incorporate you guys into this process, so that way, I want you to participate.
Vice Chair Rosati, if I may, for this time, I'll, I'll make the motion.
Well, let, let's, let's show Ms. Heiner how to do it. So you see where it says project number in the resolution, you're simply reading, you're saying, I'd like to make a motion, and you read that statement, and then we'll, we'll call for the vote. You're on mute.
Yeah, I know. Please, please, please proceed. Do the, call for the, call for the vote.
So Mr. Attakunian will show you, and he's just reading the, the staff, where it says hearings and announcements, he's just reading that motion. Go ahead, Mr. Attakunian.
All right. I should close the page. I'll open it back up. All right. I'd like to propose a resolution of the Planning Board of the City of Burbank approving a sustainable community's environmental assessment and mitigation monitoring and reporting program pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act for the Burbank Arrow Crossing Mixed Use Project at 2311 North Hollywood Way, project number 20 dash 0003289, based on the findings of the fact and subject to the recommended conditions of approval, Exhibit B. In addition, I would also like to propose a resolution of the Planning Board of the City of Burbank approving conditional use permit, density bonus waivers, development review, and tentative parcel map number 083410 for a mixed use project submitted pursuant to SB 330 at 2311 North Hollywood Way, project number 20 dash 0003289, Exhibit B of our materials.
So we have a motion. Somebody want to second that motion?
Mr. Vice Chair, could I just make a clarification that the exhibit referenced on the first resolution is Exhibit A and not Exhibit B?
Yes, I did say Exhibit A.
Okay.
As Exhibit A.
Okay, sorry. I thought I heard different.
Okay.
It's really clear now. Thank you.
So we have a motion?
I second that motion.
We have a second. Is there any more deliberation, communication on the motion? Can we have the roll call, please?
Chair, can I just clarify? Since we're asking for two separate motions, and I, I know Board Member Attakunian recommended both motions.
Do you want--
And there was a second. I, I just want to get clarification. The motion, the second was made by whom, and--
Board Member Monaco.
Okay, so Board Member Monaco, just to be clear, you're, you're making a motion for the first resolution and a separate motion for the second resolution. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, and, and, and so noted, I would just request, and hopefully the chair and the board is, is okay with this, and it's, and I'm doing this properly. City attorney calls me otherwise, and that is just to take two roll call votes, one for the first motion, and then one for the second separately.
Okay, please. Let's have a roll call, please, for the first motion.
Board Member Monaco?
Approve.
Board Member Heiner?
Approved.
Board Member Attakunian?
Yes.
Vice Chair Rosati?
Yes.
Motion passes.
And can we have a, a roll call for the second motion, please?
Board Member Monaco?
Yes.
Board Member Heiner?
Yes.
Board Member Attakunian?
Yes.
Vice Chair Rosati?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great. Thank you all. Congratulations to our applicant. Moving on to oral communications. Now is the time for oral communications from the public, and any person speaking during the period may address the board on any matter concerning city business. Comments are limited to three minutes. To participate, please call 818-238-3335. The phone lines are now open. Please bear with us as we take a couple of minutes for the first callers to get through. So we'll give it a minute or two. No callers. Okay, moving on. Reports? Do we have any reports?
Chair, Vice Chair, we do not have any new reports.
Okay. Approval of the minutes. Somebody want to make a motion for the minutes? Or just move it, please? Board Member Monaco, Board Member Heiner, would you like to move the minutes?
I recommend we approve the minutes from September 13th.
Okay.
My second.
We have a second? Any more deliberation on that? Can we get the roll call on?
Board Member Monaco?
Yes.
Board Member Heiner?
Yes.
Board Member Attakunian?
Yes.
Vice Chair Rosati?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Introduction of additional planning items. Now is the time for introduction of additional agenda items. Planning board members may introduce new items for discussion, but take no action, but accept to place it on a future agenda. Do anybody, does anybody want to have something to introduce? Seeing none? City planner comments?
So Vice Chair and Board Members, I think this is a carryover. We're going to take another crack at this, and that is, we'd like the board to consider any nominees for the liaison for the Sustainability Committee. I believe until this point, for the last two years, it's been the Vice Chair. Oh, four. I'm sorry, I could be incorrect, for the last--
Four years.
For the last four years--
Somebody else has jumped in the, turned in the barrel.
So, so Vice Chair has, has shown his team player commitment, and he's asking graciously for consideration of other board member, another board member that may want to take on the mantle, at least for the year, and then we can maybe reevaluate if that's a possibility.
Just for a year, somebody?
Yes, I really would like to help out. I just really can't. If I could, I would have jumped in and would have done it.
I know.
I, 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 I wouldn't be able to do it any justice.
I'm doing hard right now, so.
Um, I will, I will take that responsibility. Let's, let's try it.
Thank you, Ms. Heiner. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So it's a, it's unanimous, and thank you, Board Member Heiner. Way to be a team player, so thank you. So we'll note it for the record, and, and by the way, we will get all the information to you and, and help you with any coordination as far as any upcoming meeting. The, the second item, I just wanted to bring it to your attention. It doesn't require any discussion. It'll be agendized, but I just wanted to give you an update, and that is that we will be, anticipate we'll be bringing, bringing back some proposed regulations to update as kind of a Phase One, the R1 standards, and also give you kind of an update as to, since its implementation back in February of 2017, kind of the, the things that, you know, just an overall assessment of the regulations and, and then some suggested changes that may help streamline the process, but it'll be at a notice public hearing. We'll get public input, and we wanted to bring that to you, and I know that's been a long time coming and one of your big requests, so I, I thought it'd be good to let you know, also just to ensure that hopefully we have everybody in attendance. It is a regularly scheduled meeting, and I know, you know, you guys have big commitments of time for other things, so hopefully everybody can attend.
We don't know when that is.
It is going to be on October 11th.
11th.
Yeah, so the next regularly scheduled meeting.
That's the R1 update.
Yeah, and I believe when you adjourn, you're adjourning to that meeting.
Yeah. Question, and, and I guess we could put it on a future agenda, but we may not have to, but the question is, SB 9, SB 10, is there going to be, is there, has there been any thought of noticing the public when a project is being built under SB 9 and SB 10?
So right now, what we're doing, since it was just recently approved, we're going through and, and going to be kind of breaking down the two new requirements, the two new bills, and staff will be preparing an assessment, which we will forward to the city manager and council on kind of an assessment, and as part of that, we'll outline an intended process and how we'll kind of incorporate those regulations into our city zoning regulations. So once that happens, I'll be able to provide you as a group, an update, plus, being if it's an amendment to the zoning code, it will actually come to you for a recommendation.
Got it. Okay. We will now adjourn to the next online planning board meeting on Monday, October 11th, 6:00 PM. The public is invited to view the meeting online or television. We're able to provide public comment in the following two ways, by leaving an email comment on the webpage at www.burbankca.gov slash-- comments, ecomments, sorry. By calling directly to the planning board meeting at 818-238-3335. Thank you all for your participa- participation, and good night.
Thank you all.